I'd like to call to order the August regular meeting of the Ware County Board of Education. If everyone would stand, I will listen prayer and Mr. Buster Tower will lead us in pledge to the flag. Heavenly Father, we first want to thank you for all your many blessings. Lord, we ask that you continue to provide a hedge of protection for our students and staff, whether they are driven to school, whether they ride buses, please keep them safe. Lord, we ask, we once again thank you for all your many blessings and it's in the name of Jesus Christ we pray, amen.
Amen.
Would you pledge the flag with me?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, you see, you have had a chance to look at the agenda. Do I have a motion to approve?
So moved.
Second.
All right, Mr. Dees made the motion, Tyra seconded, any discussion? Hearing none, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, nay. Hearing no nays, it passes. Mr. Superintendent?
Yes, tonight we have Mr. Roger Collins, our Tax Commissioner with us. Nice to have him in front of a nice crowd tonight. So he's going to come up and just really give information on the school board's role and the, you know, the recent information that's been out there regarding taxes and the assessments and appraisals and the school board. And what does it, what do we have to do with that and how that operates? We want to make sure we get accurate information out to the public and, and maybe you have some time that we can ask him a few questions or you can ask us and I don't know how it works, but we'll get it worked out where we want to make sure we're providing the public with the accurate information when it comes to our budget and how the new tax appraisals are going to work. Do you mind coming up to the podium there, Mr. Collins?
Good afternoon.
This is the second meeting I've been to and there's more people here than there was at City Hall, so got me nervous. Yes, about the taxes. I tried to explain in on Thursday, the process, the reason why the reevaluation process by the Chief Appraiser and the Board of Assessors happened. 2020, we had a, our digest was submitted. The Department of Audits, which I'm pretty sure you're familiar with, they, they go and they audit from December back to January. Where department revenue is from January to December. The Department of Audits, they said our sales ratio, which is what's basically what you're taxed at. You're being, you're taking values and you're taxing them at 34%, 36%, 40%. Well, the threshold is 40. The range is 36 to 40. If it goes below that, the public utilities, they, they get to pay at whatever that rate is. If it's above 36, they have to pay at 40%. And that's a lot of money. CSX, CSX pays $2.8 million. Georgia Power pays a little over a million dollars at the 40%. We got, was it 21? We got a letter in October of 21 for 20. We all know COVID happened in 20. We got a letter from the Department of Revenue Commissioner. I got, I got the letter. It was addressed to me and CC to the other, the other individuals, that we were being fined $104,920. That's $5 a parcel because our ratio was too low. And so the Board of Commissioners and the Board of Assessors, they, they got a response back to the Department of Revenue. They got under a consent order where they had to have it up this time last year. It was supposed to have been, we, the, all the revalue, property revows was supposed to be completed last year. They couldn't do it, so they had to pay $10,000 for an extension. And so they're under this consent order. The Commission, they, they signed a contract with GMAS. That's, that's a company who does appraisals. And they were, this was, that, that, they put the bid out and there was, there are several companies in Georgia and in Florida that can do it, but there was only one company that put in the bid and that was GMAS. So we're at $750,000, all right? Where you have so much time to get it done, you're under consent order. And if that's not done in that time, $500 fine every business day until it's done. Now, this was back in 21 and they just got these done. So you can imagine what the fine would be every day. And then a penalty every year. That's a lot of money, a lot of money. And they had, they, the Board of Assessors, they had not had a complete revaluation since 2012. And I think many of you remember 2012 with the large acre tracts and small acre tracts and complaining and all that stuff. That was the last time that they actually was able to do a complete revow. So the assessors, they got, they got the file in. And the Chief Appraiser looked at the file and he said, this is some, something's wrong because he looked at the commercial, just at the commercial. And every commercial property went up a minimum of $2.5 million. Every commercial property. So instead of sending assessments out, then he held them and he was trying to, trying to work on the commercial property. And so that's what happened with all these high values. That's the reason why everybody's got these high values. The other reason is the market, the real estate market has exploded. It's, it's been unreal. There are several instances, which is one, I can tell you a couple of them that I know of for a fact. We had one, I say we, the county appraisers, they had one valued at $110,000. That's what the taxable va, that's what the value was. They had went up to 135. The owner appealed. The owner appealed because he said it wasn't worth $135,000. He put it on the market, same time he put it on the market for 199. It sold for $240,000. And that was, that was just one house. There's, there's a house we had at $27,000. The fair market value was $27,000. It sold for $79,000. We had one that was valued at $33,000 that sold for $145,000. And it, that was, it's just the market. And you know, you turn around, when everything went for sale, there was no low values anymore. Everything was inflated up. Well, you've got one here and one there. They can, they can look at that and they can, they can tell if that's, that's either a fair sale or not. But when everything is going through the roof, that's, they, that's where the values have come in. There's, there's people who have complained about their house being valued too high. And I've got proof they bought that house for more money than what they're complaining about. Yes, yes, the real, the real estate market, it's a real estate market is, and they want everybody to be taxed fairly. So let me say this. It's if you're homesteaded with the freezes, you're not going to see an increase in your taxes. You're likely going to see a decrease because all the millage rates are dropping. The rollback rates have dropped tremendously. The pre, with the preliminary, preliminary numbers. The cities went, the city of Wecross went from 11 down to eight, 8.2. And I don't know, I've, I've never in my lifetime ever seen anything remotely close to way, city of Wecross having eight mills. The counties dropped from 13 down to 11, down to a low 11. And the school boards, your, your rollback rate, the actual rollback rate right now is 12.475. So, and I know, I mean, I've, I've been doing this job long enough to know I, that the school board cannot go below 14 mills. I know that. I know that you will lose money. The, but those are preliminary numbers. With this appeal period, the citizens, if you don't, if you do not agree with your values, it does not matter if it's your house, commercial property or what, go appeal. They're waiting for you, they wait, they're waiting for taxpayers to come up because they're taking them individually back and working on it. They have, they have a feeling that all their numbers isn't, isn't correct. But at the same time, there's a lot of them that, that are, that, that's, they are. My house, personally, my house went up. And I agree with, I agree with. I wouldn't sell my house for what they got at in my land. But that's, that's mine. Everybody's is different. But let me say the homestead, if your homestead frozen and you're not going to see a tax increase, you're going to go down. But there's going to be some that's going to come up because a rollback rate is designed to get each entity the amount of taxes they had the year before. Anything they have in addition to that is new growth, new businesses, new houses, houses that, that sold. And it was, they were, they were homesteaded at a low level and now that's off. And if they get a homestead, it's not that low level now. It's up at the regular level where they bought it. So that's where they're going to see an increase. And I understand people's feelings about money. I don't like to pay, I don't, I'm the, I don't like to pay taxes. I don't, but I'm the first one that has to pay mine because I know there's people out there, did you pay your taxes? I paid mine before I even put, before I even mailed them out. But the thing is, is also I'm a taxpayer and I just didn't feel, there, there's some things that's not right when you think that a homestead is decreasing, but my commercial property or my real estate property is going to increase and it's going to offset your tax. I'm going to pay more than somebody else's fair share. But me as a homeowner, I'm, I'm cool, I'm cool with it. So you split. Me personally, I have two rental houses. And they went up on mine and I, I actually appealed because I did not agree with it. And I approved mine. But that's, that's everybody's right. Everybody's right. You can, if you do not agree with it, go appeal it. So I'm going to open this floor and let y'all ask me questions.
Well, one thing, if I may, just to explain kind of what Mr. Collins was talking about from the school board standpoint, why we can't go below 14 mills. We get equalization money from the state. Our budget is over $70 million this year. Okay, that was approved prior July 1. Our fiscal year is July 1 through June 230th for the following year. So we were approved before the tax digest comes out. Okay, so when all these appraisals come out, we've rolled back, we talked about the rollback rate. We've rolled back every year for the last 11 years, okay? We have a cap, we can't go above 20 mills, we can't go below 14 mills, okay? The city and county can roll back to what he suggested. You know, ours was, what was our rate, 12 point something? We will roll back, our current millage rate is 15.064. So we will roll back to 14. And the reason is equalization, we get $12.4 million from the state of equalization funds, okay? That's about the same amount we get from property taxes, okay? Over $70 million, you know, budget, you know, 12, it almost matches the property tax amount. So we will have to have a couple of meetings because it will be considered a tax increase, even though we are rolling back to 14 mills, okay? So it's not our desire to raise taxes, that's not it. If we don't roll back or if we roll back only to 14, then we are still eligible for the equalization funds. If we go under the 14, we have to lose the 12.4 million. Now we've got another situation where we're going to have to come back and rally the troops and see how we're going to make up for the 12.4 million. That's the, that's why I wanted Mr. Collins to be here and I just kind of wanted to put that information out. We'll get some more information out to the public as well. But that's kind of where we are from a school board. I don't know if any of the members wanted to say anything about that or.
Well, I want to touch on that. Thursday, this past Thursday, when we was at Exchange Club, Senator Russ Goodman was there. And he was, he actually come and sat down beside me, he was asking me how it was going. You know, I see it is. And he told me, and this is, this is for y'all's info, that they're going, they're working on something in Atlanta and they, they've already got it pretty much settled. And that when they go back in the session, they're going to try to amend the 14 mills for the school. They're going to, they're going to try to get it lower down to 10 mills. That's just food for thought, information that, that he gave me. And if there's any other questions that, that the board would like to ask for Department of Revenue, please let me know because I am on the Department of Revenue Commissioner's advisory, as advisory committee. And I, we've got a meeting up there on the 27th. So if there's anything that, that y'all would like to ask them about anything, I'm more than willing to take questions I can take out there.
In relation to that, like there you said, they're going to lower it 10 mills in the next session.
Yes.
But we'll already be passed.
Yes.
It won't affect us this time.
It won't, it won't affect you this time. But, but on the, the, the commit, the Board of Assessors are required. They are required by law to follow up on all of the reappraisals. And it will affect you going forward. There's also going to be amendments on the November ballot concerning homestead. It's a state homestead, it's three, three, can increase more than 3% inflation and all that stuff. That's, that's well and good. But the, our local homestead is better than what, what the states passing, what they, what they are trying to pass. That, that's to help out the ones that's just got the normal homesteads. And that's to help their inflation with the growth. And they're trying, they're trying to come up with a way with, with the, the real estate market increasing, how they can, how they can slow that down on the, on the taxpayers. There's going to be another amendment concerning the property tax, on the personal property tax exemption. A difference between 7,500 and they want to change it to 20,000. So.
Roger, if the, there's somewhere, if a certain number of appeals, if there's a percentage, then the digest cannot be.
Yeah, so on a normal appeal year is 5%. A normal, normal year. On a complete revow is 8%. That's 8% in the total number of parcels that, that are appealed or the number on the digest. And what that does, that doesn't freeze everything. And everybody thinks it's, I hear it all the time, well, it's going to stop it. It's not stopping it. What it's doing, it's going to, it's going to hold the digest up from them giving it to me to, to work on, to get it approved by the Department of Revenue for the tax bills. So I'm, they've already, they're already late behind what they was doing. Because by law, I'm supposed to have the digest by July 15. The 45 day appeal period is supposed to be over by July 15. And I'm supposed to get the digest. And that's what I always, that, what we've been doing in the past. And we get tax, we get tax bills out in August and give everybody extra time. It's not going to happen this time and the di, the deadline will not be November 15. There will, there'll be, there's no way it'll be November 15. The appeal period ends, I believe, September 6. I see the 4th or 6th. And then if they can get everything done and we don't have the weight to get more appeals taken care of, well, I'll, I'll get the, the digest done, it'll be close to October. Because there's a lot of stuff that I have to do. And then getting that approved through the, through the Department of Revenue. And then by law, I have to give, send tax bills out and by law, give 60 days as a deadline. So, I mean, it's going to push it, I think the earliest it'll be in December. It'll, it'll be in December.
But that's when the bills would go out.
No, the, I'm, I'm praying earliest that, that the deadline will be in December. I'm praying it'll be this year. And the reason being that there's, it's twofold. One is to give, to get the money to the Commission, to the Board of Education, to the county and to the city. But the other thing is, how many people write off their taxes on, on their income tax? If they don't have, if, if it's, they're not out this year, that's a big, that's a big drop for them. And the, the biggest thing is to get the values right. You want to get the values right. And again, I say that I am not in charge of the Chief Appraiser. I, I am not involved in appraisals. But my background, I came from the Board of Assessors, so I know that, I know what they're doing. And also with my role being the Tax Commissioner, I have a lot of interaction with Department of Revenue and the Chief Appraisers.
Mr. Collins?
Yes, ma'am.
Is there a deadline for the, for the taxpayers to appeal their property taxes?
Yes, ma'am.
When did you say? I'm sorry.
Sept, it's either September 4th or September 6th. It's got the date on the, on your assessment letter.
Okay, thank you kindly.
Yes, ma'am.
Any other questions?
No.
No, but thank you for this.
Thank you for being here. We appreciate it.
And I'll, I'll stick around if y'all want to ask me any questions afterwards, personal questions about your house, whatever. And I, I do want to say this. I did not, I did not, did not say the school taxes were going to skyrocket. That's the first time I heard about that, but I did not say that. I said, y'all's rollback was 12 something, but you cannot go below 14. So.
Thanks, sir. We appreciate it very much.
Appreciate it.
Superintendent, item B.
Yes, Dr. Lynn Barber's here. He's going to speak briefly about our CTA plus pathway options.
Very brief. But I do come bearing good news.
Um, you know, it's a known fact that students in our career tech and agriculture education classes apply a lot of academic skills, do a lot of math and language arts and science skills. And the Department of Education recognizes that. And this summer, State School Superintendent rolled out something called CTA E plus so that students that complete certain pathways can get a fourth credit in some of their core subjects. Right now, students have to tag, take four maths, four, four sciences and four English Language Art classes to graduate. So there's a list, and you've got the packet before you have several, many pathways that would now count towards some of those math, science or English Language Arts credits. We currently offer three of those pathways at Ware County High School. And so students at our high school who complete the Agricultural Mechanics Pathway, the Engineering and Technology Pathway, they could get credit for a fourth math. Now that, we, we, we are having the counselors meet with those students to help them understand if they are planning to go to a university system college, Aback, Bautista State, UGA, any of those, this does not count as a fourth math. But if they're going to technical school or straight into the workforce, they could graduate with taking one less math course because of the math being embedded in those subjects. So we're advising the students now, they need to think ahead. If they think they may go to college one day, you know, university system school, they probably still need to stay in there. But what this does, it frees up a section on a, on a student's roster that they could take another elective. So that, that could help them broaden their horizons or they could go ahead and start a dual enrollment with our technical college. And then on English Language Arts, our Business and Technology Pathway counts for English and Language Arts credit. We don't currently teach any of the pathways that count for science credit. However, we do have several of our CTA classes that do count as a fourth science. So to get the credit, the student has to take three courses in a pathway, pass all three, and then that credit is naturally embedded in there. Usually when the Department of Education rolls something out, it starts with a ninth grade class and goes up. But we checked this summer, they said, no, any student already in high school that who's completed those pathways gets the credit. So we're calling those students, seeing, make sure they, they are aware of it. And then going forward, the counselors will advise those students. So just wanted to share that information with, with you all. We think that's a good thing. If you've ever walked in some of those classes, they're doing a lot, a lot of those core academic applied concepts. So it's, I, I think it's a step in the right direction. So any questions?
No.
All right. Thank you, Lynn Barber. I'm going to put her on the spot. Ms. Cooper, do you mind helping these next two? Kind of give them a brief little, I'll recognize the winners, but each contest, what that entails. Do you mind doing that? Okay. All right.
Sure, absolutely. I pray.
All right. I like you. But, but as far as, you know, how the, you're, you're involved with this. I'm asking Ms. Cooper to do this because she's involved.
Good evening. It's always a good day when we have a full house and when we can recognize some students, which we're here to do tonight. This recognition has been a long time coming. We were informed of their winnings at the end of last year, but with summer, we needed to wait to recognize them tonight. So we are so excited to have two of our students who are state level winners in writing contests that we've had this past year. We have Ally Robertson, who was the fifth grade statewide winner in the Young Georgia Authors Writing Contest. And then we also have Tyson Cave, who was the sixth grade statewide winner in the Georgia Fair Bear Writing Contest. So not only did they win for their class, then they competed at the school level, then they competed at the district level, and then they went to state and they excelled and achieved, so we are so proud. So at this time, Ally, if you'll come up.
We're going to have Ms. Crawford come out too. They have a speech also. Okay, one more. Can we, can we get a picture real quick and then you can do the speech? All right, I'm asking Ms. Crawford to come out because she is the writing coordinator there at the school. So we do.
I'm all.
Mr. Davis.
Sure, but I want, I want Mr. Davis.
These wonderful teachers have taught Miss Ally, given God in her greatness.
Wonderful teachers have taught, Miss Ally, given God in her greatness, okay? So you have the spotlight. Okay, Ms. Cooper.
Okay, good evening. It is with great pride and joy that I stand here today to honor an exceptional student who has truly shined through her power of words. During the two thousand twenty-three, twenty-four school year, Ally Robertson, a fifth grade student at Ruskin Elementary, won the Young Georgia Author Writing Competition for the state level. As a teacher, one of the most rewarding experiences is seeing a student discover their voice and use it to create something truly remarkable. Ally's winning entry, titled "My Senior Year", shines with a captivating storyline and vivid imagery. It tells the story of how one student found solace in volunteering at an assisted living home amidst the chaos of her senior year of high school. She befriends a resident at the assisted living home whose unexpected generosity leads to a treasure hunt and a life-changing discovery. From the moment Ally shared her story with me, I knew it was something very special. Her unique ability to weave words together, to build a world that draws readers in, is truly beyond her years. But what impressed me the most was her perseverance and hard work she put into perfecting her craft. Ally didn't just write a story, she lived it, breathed it, and polished it until it was a true reflection of her imagination and talent. Watching her growth as a writer has been an absolute joy. And I couldn't be prouder of what she has achieved. Winning the Young Georgia Author Award at the state level is no small feat. And Ally has earned it through her passion, creativity, and dedication to the art of writing. I have no doubt that this is only the beginning of a bright future filled with many more stories and accomplishments. Please join me in congratulating Ally Robertson on this incredible achievement. Ally, you've made us all so proud and we can't wait to see where your writing journey takes you next.
Uh, and just in case you're curious, the gift that we're presenting tonight is a pen that's appropriate because it's a writing award and it says, "The Ware County Board of Education congratulates you." So we hope that you will use this as you continue to write, um, throughout the years. And we look forward to reading what you have to offer. We're gonna ask Tyson Cave to come up as well to accept his award.
Congratulations.
Congratulations once again, Ally and Tyson. That's impressive to win.
It's very impressive.
We're very, very proud of you both. And parents, congratulations as well. I know y'all have led them in the right direction.
And grandparents.
And grandparents from, and Ruskin and Ware Middle and Waresbury Elementary too, right? So, all of them. All right, tonight we have Ms. Solomon, and she's going to present the Golden Achievement Award for August.
And to, to let everybody know, Ms. Libby Trogdon is the Ruskin Teacher of the Year for this school year. And Mr. Durance is a former Teacher of the Year at Ruskin. So, you know, greatness comes out of Ruskin. All right. Um, to the Ware County Board of Education, Superintendent, members and visitors, it is my absolute pleasure to announce, drum roll, Nakia McGauley as the classified Golden Achievement Winner for Ruskin Elementary School. Ms. McGauley is a valuable asset. She's honest and dependable. Nobody's coughing about that. And incredibly hardworking. In addition to those impressive qualities, she is a super leader and role model for our faculty, staff, and students. Currently, she works as a paraprofessional within the kindergarten department where her belief is that all students are able to succeed. It is more than empty words. It is the force that drives her to rise up and make a difference in their lives. Along with her undeniable love and compassion for our students, she is a true team player with a positive attitude, when we wring her neck and get it out of her, that invokes the best in all of us at Ruskin. Nakia McGauley is honored by our peers and it's most deserved, is most deserving of this award. Congratulations. To the Ware County Board of Education, Superintendent, members and visitors, it is my absolute pleasure to announce Tony Buffy Smith as the certified Golden Achievement Winner for Ruskin Elementary School. Okay. If you haven't heard of Buffy Smith, you'd better listen up, okay? She is one intense teacher in educating those little kindergarten Jaguars. She is a dedicated and enthusiastic educator who strives to create engaging learning environment for her students. She always goes the extra mile to ensure her students are challenged and supported in their learning. She is highly organized, reliable, and always prepared for class. She is an awesome teacher leader and helps to guide all to greatness. Additionally, she is a great role model for our faculty, staff, and students. Unbeknownst to many though, she's the reason you see me in those costumes and dressed out at the school, okay? That was a little difficult for me, coming from the middle school and the high school level, okay? But she, yeah, she did it. Buffy Smith is honored by her peers and is most deserving of this award. Congratulations.
Is that something we see? Thank y'all for coming, Doug.
Yeah, thank y'all.
All right, Dennis.
Have a good night.
What, is it off?
No, ma'am, it's just on. Stand by.
Oh. So you didn't take the children instead?
Okay. Uh, next, uh, business, uh, item number six, but I believe.
Yes, she couldn't make it.
She could not make it. Item number seven.
Yes, recommend for approval payroll and disbursements as of July thirty-first, twenty twenty-four, the amount of six million, four hundred thirty-seven thousand, two hundred ninety-two dollars and forty-seven cents. Financial report was given last night by Ms. Shanie. The enrollment report, we don't have one yet because we just started school. Significant calendar dates, uh, first day of school was Monday, and then we have a Labor Day holiday on September second and a professional learning day on September third. So I have.
Okay. Item number eight. Okay. All right, do I have a motion to approve?
So moved.
Second.
All right, uh, Coach Dennis made the motion. Um, Ms. Waters seconded. Any discussion? Here none, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, nay. All right, aye, item number eight now.
Yes, sir. Recommended for approval amendments from the work session on July fifteenth, board meeting on July sixteenth, and the call board meeting on July twenty-sixth.
Okay, you heard recommendations, Superintendent. Do I have a motion?
So moved.
Second it.
All right, um, Mr. Tyra made the motion. Ms. Nelson seconded. Any discussion? Here none, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, nay. Item number nine.
Yes, recommend for approval, the next era of energy resources classroom makeover grant agreement for Waycross Middle and Ware County Board of Education.
Okay, heard recommendations, Superintendent. Do I have a motion?
So moved.
Uh, Ms. Etheridge made the motion. Coach Dennis seconded. Any discussion?
This was already approved earlier. This is just a contract between Waycross Middle and the Board of Education. It was fifty thousand dollars and we're very appreciative for this grant.
Okay. And no, no other comments? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, nay. All right, um, Superintendent, uh, item number ten.
Yes, recommend for approval, the strategic waiver school system contract with Ware County Schools and the State Board of Education. The contract will be in effect from July one, twenty twenty-four through June thirtieth, twenty thirty.
Okay, you heard recommendations, Superintendent. Do I have a motion?
So moved.
Second.
All right, uh, Ms. Nelson made the motion. Uh, Mr. Dee seconded. Any discussion? Here none, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, nay. Item number eleven.
Yes, recommend for approval, the request from Liberty University School of Education to establish an articulation agreement with Ware County Schools outlining clinical practice and field experience details for candidates in the school of education.
Heard recommendations, Superintendent. Do I have a motion?
So moved.
Second.
Um, Tyra made the motion. Ms. Waters seconded. Any discussion? Here none, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, nay. Item number twelve.
Yes, recommend for approval, the clinical educational agreement with Harbor View to till out the clinical site for healthcare students in the patient care pathway. These clinical experiences provide students with the opportunity to observe the skills taught on the healthcare pathway in a real-world setting.
All right, heard recommendations, Superintendent. Do I have a motion?
So moved. Second it.
All right, Ms. Etheridge made the motion. Ms. Nelson seconded. Any discussion? Here none, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, nay. Item number thirteen.
Yes, recommend for approval, the request to change the December work session to board meeting dates from December ninth to tenth, twenty twenty-four to December sixteenth for the work session in December seventeenth for the board meeting due to the dates of the Georgia School Board Association's winter conference.
Heard recommendations, Superintendent. Do I have a motion?
So moved.
Second.
All right, Ms. Etheridge made the motion. Mr. Tyra seconded. Any discussion? Here none, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, nay. Item number fourteen.
Yes, recommend for approval, the twenty-four, twenty-five local board training plan for the Ware County Board of Education members.
All right, heard recommendations, Superintendent. Do I have a motion?
So moved. Second it.
All right, Ms. Waters made the motion. Ms. Nelson seconded. Any discussion? Here none, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, nay. Item number fifteen.
Yes, recommend for approval, the request from Director of Services who seeks to apply for a micro grant for up to three thousand dollars from Magnolia House in Roseville, Georgia to cover the cost of Red Ribbon Week and substance use education training.
All right, heard recommendations, Superintendent. Do I have a motion?
So moved.
Second.
All right, um, Coach Dennis made the motion. Uh, Ms. Waters seconded. Any discussion? Here none, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, nay. Item number sixteen.
Yes, recommend for approval, the CTA Director's request to seek approval of the FY twenty-five local plan for career technical and agriculture education. The CTA local plan includes the amounts received in federal Perkins Five, required local maintenance of effort amounts, and local system assurances that are required for each grant.
All right, heard recommendations, Superintendent. Do I have a motion?
So moved. Second.
All right, uh, Mr. Tyra made the motion. Mr. Dee seconded. Any discussion? Here none, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, nay. Item number seventeen.
Yes, recommend for approval, the FY twenty-five capital outlet program funded application for Waycross Middle School.
All right, heard recommendations, Superintendent. Do I have a motion?
So moved.
Second it.
All right, Coach Dennis made the motion. Um, Ms. Etheridge made, uh, did second. Any discussion? Here none, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, nay. Item number eighteen.
Yes, recommend for approval, the request from Director of Facilities to purchase an air conditioning unit in the amount of five thousand, five hundred ninety-six dollars for the A and M wing at Ware County High School. The current unit is in need of replacement. The funding source is general funds.
Okay, heard recommendation from Superintendent. Do I have a motion?
So moved.
Second.
All right, Ms. Waters made the motion. Uh, uh, Tyra seconded. Any discussion? Here none, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, nay. Item number nineteen.
Yes, recommend for approval, the request from Ware County Schools Police Department Chief to purchase three Ford Explorers based on the current state contract. The state contracting price is forty-one thousand, seven hundred fifty-eight dollars per vehicle. The total price, including the two hundred twenty-five dollar delivery fee, is in the amount of one hundred twenty-five thousand, nine hundred forty-nine dollars. The funding source will come from the police department budget.
All right, heard recommendations, Superintendent. Do I have a motion?
So moved.
Second.
All right, Ms., uh, Nelson made the motion. Coach Dennis seconded. Any discussion? Here none, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, nay. Item number twenty.
Recommend for approval, the request from Director of Transportation to use Lewis and Rollson as our fuel vendor. They were the sole beer.
All right, heard recommendations, Superintendent. Do I have a motion?
So moved. Second.
All right, uh, Mr. Dee's made the motion. Uh, Coach Dennis seconded. Any discussion? Here none, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, nay. All right, uh, item number twenty-one.
Yes, recommend for approval, the request from Director of Nutrition to make cafeteria enhancements for Williams Heights in the amount of eighty-four thousand, eight hundred thirty-six dollars. The funding source is school nutrition funds.
Okay, you've heard recommendations, Superintendent. Do I have a motion?
So moved.
Second it.
All right, Mr. Tyra made the motion. Uh, Ms. Etheridge seconded. Any discussion? Here none, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, nay. Item number twenty-two.
Yes, recommend for approval, the request from Director of Nutrition to make cafeteria enhancements for Waycona in the amount of eighty-four thousand, eight hundred forty dollars. The funding source is school nutrition funds.
Okay, you heard recommendations, Superintendent. Do I have a motion?
So moved.
Second it.
All right, uh, Coach Dennis made the motion. Ms. Nelson seconded. Any discussion? Here none, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, nay. Item number twenty-three.
Yes, recommend for approval, the fundraisers at Memorial Drive, Waycona, Waresbury, Ware County Middle, Waycross Middle, and Ware County High.
All right, heard recommendations, Superintendent. Do I have a motion?
So moved.
Second.
All right, uh, Coach Dennis made the motion. Ms. Waters seconded. Any discussion? Here none, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, nay. Item number twenty-five.
Twenty-four.
Twenty-four, excuse me. Approved.
Recommend for approval, the field trip for Ware Middle, the band going to Bad Austin, Antifa.
All right, heard recommendations, Superintendent. Do I have a motion?
So moved. Second it.
All right, Ms. Nelson made the motion. Etheridge seconded. Any discussion? Here none, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, nay. Item number twenty-five.
Yes, recommend for approval, the request for the use of Ruskin Elementary School auditorium, the morning purpose ring on August twenty-fourth, twenty twenty-four, for the National Sorority of Five Delta Capital Sorority Planning Session Retreat with a waiver of fees. The request was made by Carol.
Heard recommendations, Superintendent. Do I have a motion?
So moved.
Second.
All right, Ms. Nelson made the motion. Mr. Dee seconded. Any discussion? Here none, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, nay. Item number twenty-six, we do need an. Item number twenty six, we do need an executive session, a short.
I'm sorry.
You abstain?
I abstain.
She abstained on that vote.
Okay, you have to holler at me.
I heard her.
Okay. So there was an abstention. On item number twenty five. Now, item number twenty six. We need a executive session, a short one. Uh, do I have a motion that we go into executive session?
Second.
All right, uh, Mr. Tyra made the motion, Mr. D secondary. Any discussion, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, nay. If we will, we will go down to the computer lab, computer lab, we'll be back. Hopefully very quickly. quickly. session.
So moved.
Second.
All right, Mr. D. has made the motion, for us to come out of executive session. Ms. Waters seconded, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, nay. All right, we're back on number twenty-seven.
Yes, recommend for approval, the Ware County Board of Education Personnel Handbook for the twenty-four, twenty-five school year.
Heard recommendations superintendent, do I have a motion?
So moved.
Second.
All right, Ms. Nelson made the motion, Ms. Nelson seconded, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, nay. Item number twenty-five. All right, heard recommendations superintendent, do I have a motion?
So moved.
Second.
All right, Ms. Nelson made the motion, Ms. Nelson seconded, any discussion? Hearing none, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, nay. Item number twenty-six, we do need any sort of.
I'm sorry.
You abstained.
Abstained.
She abstained on that vote.
Okay, you have to holler at me.
I heard her.
Okay. So there was an abstention. On item number twenty-five. Now, item number twenty-six, we need an executive session, a short one, do I have a motion that we go into executive session?
So moved. Second.
All right, Ms. Tyra made the motion, Mr. D. seconded. Any discussion, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, nay. If we will, we will go down to the computer lab, we'll be back shortly, hopefully very quickly.